It is now five o'clock. February 15, 2017. And I call to order the adjourned regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Successor Agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the city as Housing Assets Successor. May we have your call, please?
Councilmember Gomez, good evening. Councilmember Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilmember Negretti is absent. Mayor Protim Cox.
Here.
Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Have we heard from Councilmember?
I have not. As far as I know, he's supposed to be here. I've heard that.
All right. Thank you.
We will have the, uh, the Plaid of Allegiance, and it will be led by Police Chief John Schuler. Please stand.
It's a slight. Behind you.
(inaudible). If you place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the United States of America, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I could welcome to speak Mr. Negretti, gentlemen.
We have all of these cards are for the last one as well. That's Kathy.
Okay, so all three are for Wendy and then that's one his score.
Yes, they want to speak on that. That's Kathy.
Okay. Okay, thank you. On our agenda today, we have item number one, and that's notice of termination for the contract with the San Bernardino County Protection District. Madam Clerk, please read here a recommendation.
The recommendation is that the City Council authorize the city manager to issue a formally notice of the city's desire to terminate the contract with the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District, the fire protection and other related services of the terms of the current contract term.
Oh.
Question.
Yes, okay.
To the city manager.
Yes, sir.
My understanding is this, the contract runs through June 30 of next year.
That's correct.
And so why would we recommend a termination now? We're not even to June 30 of this year.
The contract actually has a provision that if we are not going to extend beyond the current contract term, we're required to give at least 12 months' notice. That's why we're talking about it now.
So it's just for technical reasons then?
Uh, well, if you want, I can give a bit of a verbal report.
I'm curious why this is on our agenda.
Um, so I want to start off by, I know we have a lot of firefighters here, and also some chief-level staff as well, that this isn't intended to be any kind of indictment of county fire. After our last discussion on annexation, the county fire chief came and met with me, and since then, I've also met with the deputy chief. And the indication from county fire chief was that any new contract after 2018 would be, would not be an extension of the current contract, that there would be certain changes to it specifically relating to unfunded liabilities at the termination of whatever future contract that would be. There was also some other complicating factors that needed to be changed in current contract, so it would be a new contract, not a simple extension of the current terms and conditions. Some of the other things that he and I discussed was that the county fire has loaned us some equipment over the last, say, six to 12 months because we had been considering annexations, and that at some point over the next, I will say month or so, I don't want to quote him, but within a short time period, those loans would be going back to county fire, back to where they were originally used, and so we needed to step up with some vehicle replacement, an estimated increase of about $3 million for next year to include that vehicle replacement and other cost increases. And then additionally, based on our budget from this current fiscal year, we were picking up the cost of half of the squad out of 311, so three firefighter repairmen, and then the county was picking up half of the squad. A lot of that has to do with some shared territory and agreements made, but those weren't part of the written contract with the city. The written contract with the city is only for those things that the city pays for. It doesn't talk about county fire responsibilities, other than the services that are provided for what the city pays. So the county fire chief in that meeting indicated that he would be pulling those staff and reassigning them, and that he would assign the three that we're paying for onto a truck from the large trucks, not an engine, and make it a four-man unit. So based on changes in the contract, based on a lot of unknowns in the future, I'm making a recommendation that we just go ahead and issue the termination, and then I'm seeking direction to go out to bid for fire services. County fire has been an excellent service provider. I can't recall one single incident, maybe there was one, I can't recall one single incident where a firefighter ever caused a complaint to come to me. So it's not about the quality of their service, except that the quality of their service is very high. I would hope to, hope that county fire bids on a contract in 2018 and beyond as part of that RFP process. I would hope that Cal Fire at least takes a look at it. I know Cal Fire is here in the room as well. I would hope that Apple Valley Fire is willing to take a look at it, and I'm also intending, should the council want to do this RFP, to engage with a consultant who will help us as a city study city fire. Again, this isn't about anything to do with county fire's quality. It is top-notch. It's about due diligence, and we are running it up to the end of our contract, and if I were to simply get into a negotiation with county fire, if that negotiation didn't go well, or wasn't concluded by the end of June of this year, then we would be essentially stuck come July of 2018, and I don't want the city to be in that position. So what I'm seeking is direction to go ahead and issue that notice of termination, so that it's very clear that we are open to any and all options, and the city council will review all options and ultimately make the best decision for our citizens.
So really no reason to wait another month, or two months, or three months to give this notice?
No, no. If we intend to do an RFP for services, to me, it's best ingenious at best to do that before we give a notice of termination.
I'll move approval.
I have a question about this. Is the motion a motion?
Just a second. Yeah.
I have a motion.
No, I would second, unless there's a lot of other discussions.
Well, I don't mind if we have a discussion, but I want the motion.
You may speak.
So, um, the city must provide the district with a notice of termination allotted in July 5, 2017. Council, we've got this about 96 hours to think about. I don't think that's enough time to think about what was happening. I wasn't aware that we were going to do a termination, and so I would like, if I can do a substitute motion, I'd like to table this agenda item and to table it closest to the July 5, 2017, so I can, so we can think through it, or at least I can think through it and talk about what are some of these options. I don't know what this necessarily means. It does sound like we're terminating our services, and then there's other questions that I've had on hand, but right now, this is a substitute motion that I'm trying to consider before the second, the first motion goes through.
Do you want to allow for more discussion first? I mean, I haven't heard any seconds on any of the motions yet, so.
But I'm asking for a second.
I second this motion. I second that. Because I guess the question is that a substitute motion should be considered first now. Is there a second?
So no second, so the public knows that we will not further consider what I've asked, right, which is, let's postpone and table?
Yeah, your motion basically has failed, for lack of a second.
Okay, so no discussion on my motion, and we're going to go ahead and vote on the next action.
Correct.
Okay.
So I move on.
Well, but it's like, I mean, it's fairly clear to me, we're going to consider all the options that are there.
Exactly.
The county will have the option to bid if they choose to.
And I hope they do.
And we hope they do. But there is no point in continuing with the contract because we're not going to accept the extension that we're looking at.
Based on the discussions I've had, I don't believe that they will propose a simple extension of the current terms.
So the only thing that makes sense is to end this now, begin looking at our options. Hope they bid.
Madam Mayor, if you'd come.
Yes.
Thank you. I think the last time we talked about this, I made very clear comments that this is an unsustainable situation for us. The population growth that doubled in the last 15 years of the city is overwhelming, to be honest with you, and our revenues did not keep up. There is no linear relationship between the demand of your services and revenues going up. It's just not the way it is. It's unfortunate. The public safety takes 67% of our general fund, fire and police. These are very important services to the city, to the residents. It's our number-one priority. This is not something that we're doing lightly, and I said it last time, we can't, we have to get off this country. We have to figure out another way. So there's some alternatives here that I think we're going to discuss.
Yeah, what's the next item?
And I'm looking forward to that, but I got to tell you, you know, there's a way that everyone can share in the cost, because people will continue to come. The demand will continue to rise, and if people are unwilling to pay for services, that's a very difficult position for us to be in. So I hope that as we discuss the alternative, we can do something that's fair for everybody and move forward, but unfortunately, there are a lot of agreements in the desert that when people came here in the '70s and '80s, those deals don't work anymore. Wastewater, electric, I mean, gas, I mean, everything. So as we, we are not done growing, and I think that it'd be interesting, once we actually finally do grow out here, but we still got a long way to go, so I'm very comfortable and appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a comment, too. During the last discussion that we had on this issue, we heard from the LAFCO representative that this may take up to a year if we go through the LAFCO procedure of doing this. We need to move quickly on everything that's available to us. I'm sure most of you know that our elected representatives at the state level have said they believe that this is a tax and should be voted on. I'm troubled by $150 for a vacant lot, $150 for a house, $150 for a hotel with 250 units. That just seems so unfair, and yet, under the current situation that's proposed, in order to make it, in order to go through with that proposal, it has to be that way. Any other provisions are going to be subject to, I guess, a secret challenge. Also, I think that the public, if they're going to pay this, and technically, it's not a tax, but they're going to think it's a tax. Mr. O'Malley spoke about it. He says in his opinion, it's a tax. You've read the newspapers, they think it's a tax. It looks like a tax, it smells like a tax, but the claim is it's not a tax. I'm, I think.
I hate to correct you, but it's, no one is saying, I don't know who's saying it's not a tax. It is a parcel tax.
No, it is, it is tax.
It is a parcel tax.
It's a parcel tax, but the general vote on it, the general public vote on it, is as this, as this, they're voting on a tax increase.
Right, right.
Rather than, like we've done on the fire district, if you don't object, it goes through, and that's a, and I said, then, I said yet, the sooner that we start looking at all the alternatives, we may end up right back where we're at and filing with LAFCO. We may very well be in that position, but we're not going to know it until we look at all the alternatives. We have to look at it, we have to look at it quickly. We have to move, move as quickly as possible, and.
So I don't want to get too deep into the next agenda item, but we have the ability to ask the voters of Victorville for a parcel tax of our own, much like Apple Valley Fire Protection District has done. That is an option that's under consideration to help fund this, whether that's city fire, county fire, Cal Fire, some other contract, that's just the base funding, that's really the next item.
Yes, I did.
But as we look at all options, one option that could be available, and I know Kathy's here, and I don't, I'm not asking her to speak, Shayna, I have not spoken on this, but there are other annexation options that are at least legally available, whether or not they would get through LAFCO, I don't know. It's not a conversation for tonight necessarily, but Apple Valley recently passed a parcel tax of their own that is not a flat rate. It has a variable rate based on parcel size. We could take a look at that to mirror, mirror that in Victorville. We could apply, again, I don't know LAFCO's opinion, and I don't want to ask it right now, but in theory, legally, we could apply to annex into the Apple Valley Fire Protection District, just like we would have to annex into county fire, FP5. Those options are out there, they should be studied, not determined tonight, but they should be studied as potential options.
The problem that I find offensive, I guess it's offensive, is that the annexation that's been proposed by the county that we were asked to consider at the last meeting creates a tax, imposes a tax on our citizens, and they do not have a right to vote on. It's an annexation process that we just accept whatever's going on in our head.
Excuse me, item number two is for discussion on that.
It is, it's a little bit of a mixture. This is really about the termination, but I think the discussion is following along with all the options available.
I'm making the point of why I believe it's important to terminate this contract. That's, that's what I'm speaking to.
In order to explore all options.
Yeah, I mean, if we, if we stay with it, we're pushed into the annexation, and I think we need to look at the other options. That's all. And I think the voters have to have a say in this.
Okay, I do have some cards on item one, so I have, and this will be a three-minute, and we do have the timer. The first one is Don Trapp.
Good evening, county mayor, county mayor and council members, Don Trapp, County Fire. I want to quickly kind of clarify some stuff and catch you up on some things and some facts that have been mixed up a little bit. County Fire's been a partner with the city since July 2008. In 2008, the city ran 12,165 emergency calls. Your contract, the first apples-to-apples contract match was 2009, 2010, the contract was $12,64,186. In calendar year 2016, we ran 19,913 emergency runs in the city. Your contract for this fiscal year is $12,732,307. That is a 60% increase in call volume and a 5.2% increase in total cost over seven years. So how did we do that? Partnering together, we did that with regionalized service model, sharing resources and working together. In the first years of the contract, you paid 100% to have your own fire chief. You paid 100% of the three battalion chiefs that are here every day. Today's contract, you pay 55% of the chief officer that's here, and you paid for 1.6 of the three battalion chiefs. That's how we did it. You used to try to maintain some of your own specialized resources that are super expensive. Now you share and work together with the county. County Fire units are integral to your handling the emergency that happened in this city. Our station 22 in Spring Valley Lake, last calendar year responded to 902 emergency incidents within the city of Victorville. That's 902 times that it was the closest, most appropriate resource to an emergency. Other county resources from Hesperia, Oak Hills, Phelan, Adelanto, surrounding the city, responded to an additional 2,565 times into the city of Victorville. Without these units, in a regionalized response time, in a regionalized response model, response times in the city would drastically suffer and be impacted. That's about nine and a half times every single day that a county fire resource has been helping the city. Other specialized resources, our hand crews responded 160 times into the city last year, and our dozer responded five times down to the riverbed area mostly. The shared resource, the medic squad we put in at station 311, responded to 3,206 calls into the city last year. We've talked about and brought it up every year, the city has not purchased a fire engine since 2006, and prior to that was 2002. The one new engine that you did get was a grant purchase that county fire went outbound, got applied for, and was awarded the grant that got the one new engine that's in service at station 311. Haven't bought a single other support unit, a staff car, a prevention vehicle, or anything else in the entire city. To help with our response and being a partner with the city, the county fire has loaned several units to the city to support its operations and to put specialized resources, such as a water tender at the city that the county is supplying, a brush patrol is a small four-wheel-drive truck.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Thank you. And all I can say is we can continue to be a partner and continue to work forward with the city. Some of the figures on cost increases last year was when we were directed by the city that we felt that FP5 was the way to go, but that's completely your option. It is not our requirement that you annex into FP5. That's a choice for you to make, and then ultimately, the voters in the protest process. We can annex without FP5. That's completely up to the city.
Thank you, thank you.
Question.
Yes.
Since Doug, you have all these statistical figures. Have you analyzed them, or you're going to have a report to the council regarding these figures?
No, I don't disagree with anything you said. There's been quite a bit of loaning by the.
No, 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 I mean, all the, he gave a lot of data that I've never seen.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, absolutely correct. We've worked together, in fact, when Don was our fire chief back in, I don't remember, 12 to 14. 12 to 14, he and I worked together to, to take that 100% cost for the chief officers and reduce it down to their actual, at least as close as could be estimated, actual cost of the city, so that helped tremendously. The city also took on some prevention work itself, plan checking itself, to shed some of those costs as well, so this is not at all about the quality of.
I know that.
Or the volume of service that we've had over the last nine years. This is about the need for a new contract in 2018.
Right.
I can add, that I discussed with Gary McBride, who's the county's chief financial officer on the way up here tonight, about the idea of unfunded liability, and even though the county has tossed that idea around, one, they don't, they haven't made a decision, and two, they don't even know if it's legal to even consider that. So I know that that's a point, but the idea would be, if there was a new contract, if it was canceled and the county was left with the employees, would there be a way to hold the county, the city responsible for funded liability? Only if you canceled the contract and left the county with the employees with something like that applied, and like I said, I talked to Gary McBride, he doesn't believe that's even feasible, so.
Thank you, Doug. My point is that, to me, there's tremendous uncertainty July of 2018, and I'd like to see in writing exactly what a contract from county fire would look like.
Right.
Compared to anyone else that's going to bid, compared to any other options that are available. There has been, over the last couple of weeks, there's been just a lot of confusion and uncertainty, uncertainty about the future of county fire assets in Victorville, and I don't want this council to make decisions based on uncertainty, so that's why I propose what I propose. You know, it, it looks very negative, it's not intended, that one. It's intended to explore all of our options, do our due diligence, and make a good decision. I, I think contracting again with county fire under a new, very clear contract is a good thing for the city. I really do, but I'd like to see it in paper and be able to compare it to other options. The term is expiring in just over a year.
I can add, we did look at the call volume, and we are using that squad to help support, help Adelanto, which is also understaffed, and I don't have an intent of moving the squad at this time. The other resources that we're loaning, we are going to be moving out of the city. Legally, it's difficult for me to support giving equipment to the city under a contract situation, but we still think that annexation is a long-term solution because it fixes that amount, and an annexation model, with or without FP5, we never come back to you when there's an MOU increase, or the roof leaks, or an engine blows the transmission. We have to operate within that fixed percentage of property tax transfer, and we still feel that's a solid long-term.
And that was my very strong recommendation at the last workshop, was to do just that. I think the councils, I don't speak for the councils, but the council, I think the council's intent is to revisit that, should the citizens of Victorville decide they don't want a local tax. I agree with you 100% that that is, you know, a long-term solution that we know that it is.
Yeah, with or without the tax.
Okay.
It's up to your choice and the voters' initiative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next card that I have is James Gregoli.
Hello, Mayor, Council. My name's Jim Gregoli. I'm the president of Local 935, and represent the San Bernardino County firefighters that sit out here today. I've had the opportunity to speak with many of you, and also had the opportunity to attend the workshop and council meeting regarding annexation into the county fire department. Almost 10 years ago, we assumed responsibility for fire service from the city of Victorville. At that time, we welcomed approximately 40 of your city's firefighters into our county fire family. When the county fire department assumed their responsibility, we were running approximately 12,000 calls a year. We run approximately 20,000 calls a year today. During that time, our budget has gone up approximately 6%, like Chief Trapp said, and not the 300% that is being talked about in the newspapers. Our firefighters assigned to Victorville have continued to do more with less. Station needs for capital improvements, fire engines and fire trucks need to be replaced, and staffing needs to increase to stay up with the call volume that the residents of Victorville generate. It was presented to this council, a option to make all those things happen, and open a station on Eucalyptus that has been empty since it was built eight years ago. Annexation in the county fire department with FP5 would achieve all those things that I just mentioned, and while it does come as a price to the residents of Victorville, the fire service today cannot stay up with the ongoing costs of operating a professional fire department just based on property taxes. Our firefighters have involved in community events and supported city functions during our last 10 years, and have given premier service to the city of Victorville and its residents. I appreciate your consideration on behalf of professional firefighters that serve the city in Victorville, that you continue on the path of annexation with FP5 in the San Bernardino County Fire Department. I believe we are the best option for the city of Victorville and its citizen, and that this option will help Victorville achieve their other projects that they're needed while bringing stable funding source to the fire department. On behalf of all the firefighters of San Bernardino County, I appreciate you listening to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I have Kathleen McDonough, and I also have you for item two.
Yes. I'm the executive officer of LAFCO. I know most of you here. I'm here to answer any questions regarding the LAFCO process, as I understand there may be a few, but also to let you know that should you choose to contract your fire protection services, for better or for worse, you are also in a LAFCO process. Contracting for fire protection as of January 1, 2017, under Government Code Section 56134, requires a LAFCO review process, and you will be required to do five-year projections and submit all that information, and that would include, should you choose to look into the contracting with Cal Fire, and that will require approval or at least acceptance from the state level submitted to LAFCO. As to the question regarding the tax, as Doug said and others have said, it has always been clear, and made clear, that the FP5 parcel tax is a tax. It is a special tax, and there are different provisions when you annex into an existing service zone with a special tax, and it does not remove the ability to vote. There is a provision to allow for a vote should protest be sufficient, so it is not that the ability to vote on this is removed, as though, and that has been portrayed in some of the articles and statements made to me. That is not the case, and the provisions of that extension have. And the provisions of that extension have been litigated in the Sunset Beach case in Orange County, and we have an attorney general opinion that provides for the extension of that special tax. And we are required, should you choose to go that option, to provide individual notice to every landowner who would pay that tax, of the commission's consideration, where there is a discretionary approval, as well as the protest process. So they have the ability to know of the means to protest, and where to get the protest form and fill it out and send it to us. But basically, I'm simply here to answer any questions that you have about the process and LAFCO and/or the fire protection.
Thank you, thank you.
Kathy, can I ask one question? Does that LAFCO approval process apply if we re-contract with the county, is what?
If you change the contract in any substantial way, it's possible. It is not required. If you contract with Apple Valley Fire, it is clear that you will. If you contract with CAL FIRE, it is clear that you will. And/or if you are proposing to annex to Apple Valley Fire Protection District, and the extension of their existing tax is a part of that, it will have the same process as the annexation to FP5. In that, every landowner will receive notice and a clear distinction as to how the special tax is calculated, and their ability to protest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I have one more card, Jason Sereno.
Good evening, my name is Jason Sereno, I'm a resident and a homeowner here in the city of Victorville. I'm here to basically let you guys know that I am disappointed in the fact that you guys did not go through with the annexation vote last month. I stood up here and pushed for it, and advocated for that. It is a solution to our city to help make us more solvent. I heard that $4 million is what we have as a reserve for a city of this size, is that accurate, Sir?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, that absolutely is not sustainable for us. Our parks are a wreck, our roads are a wreck, we need additional funding into our city coffers to make us more sustainable and to make our city more viable. You stated that we have numerous residents, more people moving into the valley, coming up here to the high desert, impacting us. With that comes a cost. There is a cost associated with having that many people come into our valley. And for $12 a month, as a property owner here in the city, I'm willing to pay that. $12 a month for additional public safety. Let's free up that $3.5 million, $4 million that we talked about last month, let that go into the city funds so that you can have a properly funded fire department here in the city, and free up some money so we can get more deputies on the street. We know that the crime rates are up, and that happens when we have an influx of additional people. You guys were presented with a solution to make things better here in the city, and that was annexation with FP5. And you guys are dwelling on it, sitting on it, and for some reason postponing the problem that we are sustaining here in the city. $4 million is not a lot of money to sustain us. I paid for Station 315 to be open. That's the second-in station by my house. It's closed. It's been built there for 10 years, empty. I don't appreciate that. We paid for a consultant for city fire, for JPA, for county contracts, all that stuff. They gave you their opinion. Can we please go back to the report that we paid for and look at that? Not pay for another consultant for all this again? We already paid for this as tax-paying citizens here in the city. So for $12 a month, I urge you guys to get through this, let's go through with the annexation with the FP5 so we can make our city viable. Public safety comes at a cost. The call volume is nearly double, you heard the chief say that the call volume is nearly double. And the resources that County Fire has provided to the city has caused the savings to the city itself right there. So we should express some appreciation for what has happened over the last few years to County Fire. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have, item one. So we move on to-
There's a motion on the second on the table.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Gorman has had another question or comment.
Who did?
Councilman Gorman.
So what I wanted to say was, in regards to Dawn and Gregoli and then Jason, I actually stood up with what you guys are saying, so if you go back and review the video, I fought for you guys. So I know what you're saying, I did a lot of write-along, individual meetings, so if you want to look back at those videos, we're there. I understand where my colleagues are coming, they also, we represent 126,000 people, and so we have to consider what is happening, but I'd like to let you know that I stood right along your side. But my colleagues have a different opinion, and I respect their opinions as well.
Madam Mayor, if I could make just a comment, I know that there was a second, a motion and a second on very specifically, you know, the recommendation, but I just want to make it clear to the council and the public that the intent following, if it goes that way, the intent is to study all of those options, including annexation into FP5, including potentially annexing somewhere else, including some of the tax options that we're talking about at the second one. So if the vote goes the way of the motion, it's not saying no to County Fire and FP5, it's saying, let's look at other options before we go down that path. So that's the intent of my action with this item, is to explore all options and do it in a very measured, a quick way. To answer Jason's question, we don't always get into a Q&amp;A with audience members, but I appreciate him coming and voicing his opinion. And actually, the consultant that I would be using would be at a time of materials rate, and would be actually the same consultant from City Gate who did the study, which was a JPA study of all of the agencies in the desert, with the exception of Apple Valley Fire. To refresh that model and make it for city only, but most of that work would be done by city staff, they would be advisors, so that's why the contract isn't on the agenda. He could do that, they could do that, within my purchase authority of only $25,000. So I just want to make that comment, just to be clear. This is not a divorce, this is looking at options and exploring and bringing them back and considering County Fire and FP5, considering City Fire, considering all of the options available to the council.
I have a question for the city manager. So what are the ramifications of terminating the contract right now versus waiting until July 5th? Is there anything? I mean, would it, because it does look negative, if you understand, and so we know a vote right now, what is that mean versus a vote later on? What if you don't have any voting? There's a lot of what if?
Yeah, I don't see any ramifications one way or the other. My point was that I did not want to, I have too much respect, you guys are going to laugh at this, but you won't think I'm being genuine, I have too much respect for my colleagues with County Fire, who I've worked with many of them, to go out for an RFP while we're under contract with them. So in my opinion, it would be disrespectful to do that. So I just wanted to make it clear, and that's my point, is that we're going to have a new contract in 2018, based on my conversations with the chief, because that was coming anyway. So to me, the termination is a bit of a formality, but it makes it very clear to the public, to the other agencies who may bid, that we are serious about this, and makes it very clear to the county, excuse me, to County Fire, that we would like a very definitive contract, what is your service, beginning in 2018, that we can evaluate. And I just don't have the interest, or really, I don't think the city has the time to try to negotiate a new contract between now and July 1st, and then try an RFP. I think to be timely, we need to get started as soon as possible.
I have another question for you. So if the approval goes through today, and you don't have a contract, what does that mean? Does that mean that there's a call tomorrow, or it takes 60 days, and then there's 10 days without fire protection services for our residents? What does that mean? So the contract, if it were to pass today, if it takes 30 days from today's date, from the 30 days to July 5th, when you get another contract, and I'm sure you don't have someone that's going to take us right away the next day, or within the next month, what does that timeframe look like for our residents?
So notice would be providing County Fire with notice that we don't intend to extend the contract beyond its termination date, which is July 5th, 2018. So it gives us 16 months to get that resolved. That contract does have a clause for continuation of services if we don't have another option.
So there's nothing that's going to happen to our fire service between now and-
No, no, we couldn't change that, I mean, theoretically, not recommending, but theoretically you could say today that you're giving the 12-month notice for February 15th of 2018.
Service will not be-
But I would not recommend-
We're not doing that.
Service runs through July 5th, 2018 with County Fire.
And it's dated, there I have information, we understand that.
I would guess July 6th, 2018, there's a very good chance service will continue with County Fire, under a different time.
Correct.
I mean, the last time we bid this, I believe we only received one bid. That's likely to happen, but this council will be able to evaluate in writing exactly what that contract is going to look like.
Okay.
Okay.
Ballot for the-
Resolution by Mr. Kennedy and a second by Mr. Cox, who is in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Gorman as opposed.
And now we move on to item two. Discussion and possible action regarding available tax and assessment options to fund fire services. I do have one card, Madam President, freebie recommendation, and then I'll go for the card.
Any action or further direction for staff is at the discretion of the city council on this item.
Thank you. I do have a card, Kathleen McDonough.
My only purpose in putting it for item two is if there were questions related to LAFCO regarding that, and the, without a discussion, I don't know if you have any that I'm available to answer those questions. The only thing that I would say is that the only entities required to have fire protection are cities, and so you are obligated to provide fire protection for your constituents at what level is your choice, beyond that.
Thank you, thank you, Kathy.
We have to aid in this discussion, this is going to be a complicated discussion. This came about after the last fire workshop that we had, I had direction to loosely, to bring back a tax for the June election that we could ask the voters of Victorville to approve, with a fallback of FP5, if it wasn't approved, something along those lines. I'll say the direction was, the spirit of the direction was clear, but the direction itself is a little bit muddled, because there's a lot of options. And my job as a city manager is to bring you all the options for you to consider, including some you may not have considered. I, at this point, am making no recommendations on any of it, some of the options that we'll go through are not good. Some of the options are easier to pass than others. Some of the options are, some will say are more fair, or less fair than others, but again, I'm not making recommendations. My goal is for the council to discuss all these options and give me direction to come back with a little bit more narrow focus, once you've seen all the options, because I think you're going to want to know a little bit more about the financial impact, hopefully of only a couple of the options, and not, you know, all the variety of options that are available.
And Doug, this is based on a realization that I think we all have, that over the next couple of years, we have some major expenditures that must occur. Whether we do it through FP5 or by some other taxing methodology, we've got to spend the money. And we don't have the ability to print it, so it's going to come from taxpayers. It's only a question of how and what's the best mechanism.
Exactly, exactly.
So we're just looking at the funding mechanism, that matter.
Not to go backwards, but County Fire is very right to be critical about our lack of funding vehicle replacement. You know, the council has had very tough times, and we've done the best that we can with, you know, the vehicles we have, and County Fire has been a great partner in this. I don't want to take anything away from them for that, the partnership. But, you know, I think the council has recognized that public safety costs, and the number of 300% comes from a staff report that I have done. That 300% is the cost of the Sheriff's Department contract between 2001 and projected increases based on MOU increases with CBA, 3%, 3%, and 3% through 2019. That's where that number comes from. It's not a County Fire number at all, so to the extent you may be thinking that's about County Fire, it's not. That is the Sheriff's Department contract, we've got all the contracts on my desk, and we have to share them. So who could get the lights? I apologize, we're going to get a tax education. Whoop, and I just pushed the wrong button. That's okay, I can figure it out. So looking at our tax assessment options, there's a variety of options available. I am going to kind of run through them, and then at the end, don't feel like anybody has to, although in the back of the room it's a little more difficult to read, at the very end, there'll be a matrix up there with all of the options, with a comparison of, you know, the timing, the percentage, the, you know, the percent of vote required, and a little bit of history about each one in recent elections, so. And I may have to pass this off to my assistant too, to take over, she put this together, Janelle Davidson, thank you for this, but with assistance from Andre's office, our assistant city attorney, Tara Taguchi. So we have two different types of taxes. The first being a general tax, I don't want to insult your intelligence by reading this, but the important things about a general tax is that general taxes are expended at the city council's discretion. They are not collected for a specific purpose. The big thing to read in this slide is that majority voter approval is required for a general tax, meaning 50% plus one. And we'll see how that's different from a special tax, upcoming. General taxes have to be adopted at a general election, the next opportunity would be November of 2018. So that puts some risk on the table if we're talking about, you know, a contract beginning July of 2018, and we haven't even gotten to the ability to ask for a general tax, something to keep in mind. Average passage rate in November 2016 was about 66%, oh, sorry, 84% in 2016, compared to a 15-year average statewide of 66%. However, keep in mind, we live in the desert, and we have very conservative voters in the desert, and if we were to analyze, and we have not, but if we were to analyze general taxes in the desert, or generally anybody not in LA, San Francisco, or perhaps a coastal city, I would imagine that number would come down dramatically. Some of the options for, under a general tax, are a sales and use tax, excuse me, let me back up, everyone calls it a sales tax. However, I cut a lot of this out because I didn't want to bore everybody with tax law, but the sales tax that you pay of 7.75% is actually 7.25% sales tax, of which the city gets 1%, just like every other city in the state. And there's actually a transaction and use tax, a TUT. We'll call it Measure I, a sales tax, but it's, per legal description, it is a TUT. A TUT, we cannot affect the actual sales tax that's collected in California, but we could adopt additional TUT. TUT is capped at a total of 2%. So, simple math, we could adopt up to 1.5% additional TUT that's collected as part of the sales tax. So if we did that, the sales tax would go from 7.75% to roughly 9.25%, trying to do the math quickly in my head there. Probably irrelevant for tonight, but it has to be in 1/8% increments. And 51 and 56 were approved back in November, which to me is rather shocking, I'll be honest, that surprises me a great deal. A user utility tax, you could adopt a general tax, November of 2018, or, excuse me, technically correct, ask the voters to adopt a general tax on a variety of different utilities that they are already paying, at which point those, we would require those utility companies to add a rate from 1% to 11% onto your telephone bill, your water bill, your gas bill, cable sewer, whatever. That is an option. And then those utility providers have to remit that to the city, five of eight of those passed in 2016. Special taxes, these are levied for specific purposes, so in this case- So in this case, we would be talking about a special tax for, called Public Safety, Police and Fire, something along those lines. They have to be deposited in a special fund. The council could not divert those funds to some other purpose such as Parks and Recreation or, you know, anything other than that's exactly what it was collected for. However, keep in mind, if you adopt a special tax and it covers a portion of what you're already spending out of your general fund, that money is then freed up for any purpose in theory. So it does require a 2/3 voter approval, so 66.7%. And it can be established at a, at a special election. Special elections, I believe, can occur anytime, but for cost savings, it's best to consolidate those. So our next opportunity would be June of 2017, then after that would be November of 2018. We could call a special election in March of, oh, sorry, November of 2017, I apologize, and then March of 2018. They have about a 56% passage rate in 2016 compared to a 15-year average of 47%. So the big difference there is, very obviously, that instead of 50% people voting for it, you need 66.7%. It's a higher number, however, it's, it can be more marketable because it ties the council's hands in the voter's eyes to only fund those things that we say we need it for. So there is a bit of a discussion to be had about which is better, special or general. I may have gone over all of this already, I apologize. So as a transaction and use tax, these are the different options. The, it requires the same voter approval. I guess this slide really is just to let you know that TUTs were about a 50% success rate statewide, 15 out of 30. So most of that information we've already gone over. A parcel tax is a special tax. We've talked about a couple of those already. It can be a flat rate. It can be a variable rate based on parcel size and use. It's considered an excise tax, it is not a fee. It's collected as part of the property tax bill on an annual basis. Of course, if you have an escrow account through your bank, it's collected monthly, placed into an escrow, they paid on your behalf, just like regular property tax bills. 59% were approved in November of 2016, 23 out of 39. More special tax options, a Melrose CFD is specifically for financing certain services such as public safety and medical aid. They can only finance new services or increases to the level, so you could not keep the level the same and go for a Melrose CFD. These, a lot of times are implemented, we see them more for infrastructure in Victorville. We have a few of these around town. The risk, at least with the infrastructure ones, and I would assume the same thing with the services for public safety, is that the voters can undo that by a vote of the people that reside within that CFD territory. So that's why when you see CFDs, it's typically for infrastructure, not for services, at least in Victorville. Assessments. This is what we colloquially say isn't a tax, but it sure as heck feels like a tax, as Mr. Cox would say. But these are levied for a specific purpose within a specified area. It could be the citywide area, and it should, would be in this case. Again, deposited into a special fund, requires a majority approval of the affected property owners through a 218 process. In this case, it's probably easier to jump ahead to the next slide and explain the very last bullet point, which is that the city's last successful one was an assessment for street lighting. And, you know, those of us that live here saw us go through that. So that involves a ballot that goes out to residents, and then they return it, and it's based on that special ballot, how the voting is calculated. If it is a variable tax, it is a weighted vote. So if, I think, Mr. Cox, you have used, maybe Mr. Kennedy has used the example of his own house versus Costco paying the same parcel tax. If we were to propose a special benefit assessment that was weighted, and Costco was going to pay more than you, their vote would count more than you based on how much more. Again, this is collected as part of the property tax bill. Emergency medical service cannot be included, so we could not use this to pay for paramedics, but we could use it to pay for fire. To the extent we would have to divide that is a little bit complicated, but it is an option. So this is the eye test for the folks in the back of the room. Most of you guys are firefighters, so I'm assuming you guys have good eyes. But this kind of, we did our best, we being Janelle, not me, did our best to kind of lay this all out and as comprehensive but concise as we could, to give you an idea for how these things all compare to each other. I would, you know, at this point, open it up for discussion and hopefully direction to narrow these things down as far as whether you think general tax, special tax, and what type of tax you would be looking for under those things. I would love to be able to tell you that a special tax, you know, that would be a transaction use tax, collected with the sales tax would be X percentage, or that a parcel tax would be this much money, but it's, there were too many options, and nobody would have been able to read this slide had we even attempted to do that. So I'm hoping to narrow this down, bring it back as quickly as possible for some follow-up work on exactly how you want us to proceed forward. With that, I will toss it back to Mayor for council questions, comments?
One question.
Yes, sir.
You talked about elections. Did you say that November 17 would be a special election?
Yes.
Of this year?
Of this year, yeah. That would be one of the options for a consolidated special election.
But June of next year is, would be the last, because that's 18, 2018.
Yes. You could actually have a special election in November of 18 as well. It would require a 2/3 vote.
Okay.
Or you could have a general in November of 2018. Either one is an option in November of 18.
Okay.
You have multiple options for a special between now and then.
All right.
So I will tell you that I have talked with consultants about these issues. There's a lot of them out there that would love to take our money and tell them, tell us, that they will advise us on how to get things done. And I'm not recommending that at this point, but I will tell you that they recommend that you attempt to go for a tax 18 months out from the election, because it takes that much time to educate and to, you know, see if a coalition will build to, in order to advocate, because the city is prohibited from advocating for or against the tax that's on our own election.
Doug, a question to clarify. We don't need this tax in place to fund our next fire contract. We have revenues today from property tax and sales taxes to fund our current fire contract and presumably the next one. This tax is needed to do the capital improvements, capital additions that are required, new engines.
You know, I think that's-
That's a question, not a statement.
I think that's a generally accurate statement. I mean, we, we will work with our County Fire chief officers when, you know, in budget time, starting next month, like we always have. They have been great partners on that. So I am confident that our next year's budget, we will fit into our general fund without any additional funding. But it will tighten up the rest of the departments. It just will, based on the estimates that I've received thus far. Now, every department typically hit budget time, and those department heads that are here can nod their heads in agreement, not that I'm requiring, but at budget time, you start to ask for things that, you know, you want to have, and ultimately the pieces don't fit the pie, and you have to start trimming some things. And again, just like our, you know, Recreation Department, just like HR and Finance and all of our general fund departments, County Fire and County Sheriff have done a good job of working with management staff to eventually produce a budget that is balanced every year. So we will make it work, but to the extent there are increases, those increases have to come from somewhere. We will have revenue increases this coming fiscal year. We will hopefully have revenue increases the year after that, but, you know, as we look further into the future, the cost of those services is rising faster than revenue.
But what I'm, what I'm getting at is that, that we're going to fail to provide fire service on July 1st of 2018 if we still have a ballot issue for this tax, say, in the November 18 election?
Um, no, we would not fail. Yeah, we will. We still like to provide. If I have to lay off every employee in City Hall, we will be providing fire services to the citizens of Victorville, myself included.
We'd like to have this-
Kathy said, but fire service is an essential service for the city.
I think it's, it goes without saying, so is police, and we've been told our police services are going to go up. And next month, we start budgeting, and we've got to get into these figures to see what we're really facing.
Yeah.
It would be nice to deal with only police or only fire, or only wrecking park or only public works, but we have a myriad of responsibility. And of course, public safety is number one priority for all of us, I'm sure it is. But we can't have the discussion of, about fire and raising money and ignore police.
Right.
It's going to be a part of it and may become a part of the election process.
Yeah, I would highly recommend, whatever election you seek, that you make it a joint public safety as, if it's going to be a special tax, that it is a joint police and fire tax, because I think it will touch more voters that way. I think it would be more influential that way.
Because it's more realistic that we do it that way.
It is more realistic. And that, and as we already know, the cost increases to the Sheriff's Department contract, which are already known because of the CIBA contract, are going to be far in excess of anything that we've seen from County Fire to date.
I have a suspicion that even though they require a higher percentage to get the vote approved, I suspect that voters, I'm thinking of myself, are a lot more willing to vote for a specific tax that they know is going to public safety. I may be wrong, but-
Well, I don't, I don't think you're the typical voter. I think you're a lot more engaged than the typical voter. You look at the other, I'm not, again, I'm not trying to press, I'm just playing a little bit of information devil's advocate here. The very top line of other considerations, November 2016, the general tax passage rate was 84%. The special tax passage rate, now, we don't know if those were public safety, I don't know what those were, was only 56%.
Hmm. Interesting. Do you look at that?
That's 50% versus 20%.
Take Mayor Ford, I say.
I'm not trying to do that.
I think that's going to be a critical consideration at this spot here.
It is.
Which way we go.
It is.
So, Councilman Kennedy, so then your question, talking about July 5th, 2018, is it inferred that we will still be contracting with the San Bruno County? Is that what you're anticipating?
No, not necessarily, but I mean, that certainly could happen.
Right, because his response was tailored towards we would still be contracting with the San Bruno County ending date July 5th, but if we continue to be July 18, then we don't understand who we're going to be having as that contract. So that means the $12 million that we currently spend would be now $15 million, so we have that budgeted. So I'm assuming it was county, but if not, it's up in the air, so I don't understand how-
That's what the process is.
-he gets a response.
We're going to find out.
We should be like money, or we don't have a bidding process. Do we have enough reserves? Is that what you're saying?
What I'm saying is that public safety has been the number one priority for this council. In fact, in 2009, when we started laying off employees and ultimately lost 200 real people, these were not vacant positions, lost 200 employees, we didn't cut a single safety position. In fact, we added police officers. So my assumption is that if revenues were to decline even in 2018, 19 budget year, that they would fully fund, the council would fully fund, like they have, and other departments would suffer as they did in the past, because it is our number one priority. So it's not that I can say that we're going to have more money in the future to pay the contract, it's that we'll have some more money. If it's not enough, we will cut elsewhere, is my prediction.
Okay, and what, what is the cost of a special election? What would that entail?
So the estimated cost for a special election is approximately $114,000. For a general is about $57,000. And the reason for that is that the election cost is spread across all of the consolidated pieces of the election, so the general election, there's a lot more people that are electing, you know, that's when, say, council elections, that's when, you know, congressional and others happen, so that, that cost is shared.
I ask for the cost because through LAFCO, we pay a certain amount, so did we lose that amount? And now we have to, like, do the $114,000?
We haven't paid anything, actually, through the LAFCO process.
Because last time we approved money for LAFCO and getting it through, so that rescinded, that took over?
No, we didn't approve any monies for LAFCO. There was a dollar figure associated with the application into FP5, into County, to annex, into County Fire, but because that was, was not approved at that time, that money was not expended.
And then one other thing I'd like to say is, with this, if there were a special election and we do fire and police, is that going to be a general fund? Because I do hear a lot, well, police always gets more and fire department gets less, or is there going to be designated pockets for each of them? How is this going to work?
So if there's a, if we do a special election and it's approved, it all depends on how that's written exactly, as far as the funding, but the money that's raised through that special election would go into a special fund that is guarded, you know, protected by law, that whatever we said we would spend it on is what we will spend it on. It's a little bit more detailed than I have at this point to say if we can define it further, to have sort of tiers that this much percent and that much percent. In reality, we would never get a special tax passed that would fully fund our police and fire, that's 30, gosh, over $30 million. That's not what we would be asking for. We would be asking for a portion of that, and then the remainder of that cost would be borne by the general fund as it is now. So it's almost moot as to exactly, you know, whether that was police or fire, because the remainder amount would be a general fund budget decision, and that is always variable every year.
Doug, I don't want to put words in a cheese mouth, but what we've heard now a number of times is that their major concern is equipment, physical assets, that that's where we are most seriously deficient. I mean, operating costs are going to go up some, we know benefits are rising, but, but the big expense that somebody has to spend the money on, either we will or the county will, is on new engines, facilities, equipment. That's the thing we're really trying to fund.
That is the biggest thing that we have not funded over the last several years that I wish we could have funded, but that would have come at the expense of recreation parks, at the expense of additional police officers that have been added, and potentially at the expense of the half of the squad that the city has paid for. We could have, instead of the, I don't know, roughly $450,000 or so thousand dollars that the city is paying for our half of the squad, had we put that toward an engine, we could have bought an engine within a year and a half. So it's a give and take, and we have not done a good job of funding asset replacement. That's guilty as charged, because we funded other things that unfortunately, or fortunately, had a higher priority at the time.
I'm not pointing fingers.
Yeah, yeah.
But this is a public safety issue, and this is also an opportunity, depending on how we do it, to increase funds available for police as well as fire.
Yes, absolutely.
To cover the fire needs, but also-
Absolutely.
-to find money to add deputies.
Yeah, and in the case of, you know, going back, because I did so much study work on it of FP5, loose numbers, that would have brought $6 million to County Fire for an offset of the property tax needed that would have always funded. That would have meant, the way it was structured in my negotiations with Don and with Dan Muncy, was that County Fire would end up, of that $6 million, County Fire would end up with about $2.4 million, and ultimately, the general fund would have ended up with about $3.5 million additional, because we would not have had to cover that portion with our existing property tax. So similarly, whether you put a firefighter's face on the tax, or a badge, or a Sheriff's Department badge on the tax, or both, ultimately, you're going to bring in somewhere between, I'm going to say, $4 and $8 million to pay for a portion of those services. The rest is going to come from the general fund. So it really depends on how you believe the voters are going to take this, because you won't be able to advocate for it. They will have to base it on the facts that are presented in front of them.
Question. Question. The city council as a body cannot take a part in that. Individual councilmen can, as I understand.
Um, I'll defer to Andre a little bit. It's, I think it's dangerous for you to do so as a council member, but if you wanted to donate money towards a fund, certainly you wouldn't be prohibited from that, but Andre...
I would agree. You're walking a very fine line there, because the general's rule is that a city cannot advocate, well, a council member, if they're doing it in an official position, you're going to get some really questionable issues there. You're doing it purely as an individual, you're going to have to be very careful about the way you do that.
Okay. Well, we need to look into that. I know of individuals who want to be proponents of this, and ask if, I can be a proponent. I said, our staff could provide all the data, and I'm not sure we can go beyond that, because I didn't know.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, do we have consensus from the council to have you research this, the options, and come back?
Well, I don't know if there's consensus or not, but I, I'm presenting you with more options than we can feasibly research in a, in an amount of time. So, even if you don't come to a consensus on which ones, if I could have some discussion about special versus general, you know, maybe it might be more helpful to say, you know, the assessment is, is not a good option, let's toss that out, or, you know, the, the, uh, user utility tax is something that is just too complicated, we don't want that. You know, let's focus on a parcel tax and bring back, as an example, not a recommendation. A helpful direction would be, let's look at a parcel tax, and let's base it on a general versus a special, and a, you know, some kind of a math calculation of parcel size, or also bring back a sales and use tax, or a transaction use tax, and let's see what that percentage is.
Actually, if I could just make a proposal that we get a little bit of everything, if you will, I mean, I hate to say that, but just without the revenue numbers, it's kind of hard to...
Yeah.
...say where the biggest impact would be, but generally, my opinion would be that something is fair and that the cost is shared by everyone, not just existing residents, but new residents as they come in, because right now, if a brand-new housing tract goes up and a thousand new homes get their, come up, and I don't know what the magic number is...
Yeah.
...before they get a new fire station, we still not going to have all the catch-up money to do, to get all the equipment and provide the personnel that we need. So, having just a parcel tax, I don't know if we get there, or, you know, maybe a special use tax, or, I'm sorry, sales tax, transaction tax.
Yeah, I know.
Maybe, you know, maybe there's a combination. I don't know.
Eric, the interesting thing about a sales tax is that it's paid by consumers.
Product.
So, it's paid by everybody.
Products.
Comes to the city and shops.
Yeah.
So, if people from Hisparia come to the mall to shop and we have a fire in the mall, anybody who uses that mall is helping pay for it. I mean, that's kind of, I think that's...
The sales and use tax rules the most.
Yeah, one interesting, again, I'm just trying to play, for information purposes, a little bit of devil's advocate, is when we had red light cameras, there was a lot of, I'll call it chatter, because I didn't see any impact, but about, I'm not going to shop in Victorville because I believe red light cameras are unconstitutional. If I'm a store owner on Bear Valley Road who sells the similar goods as the store owner across Bear Valley Road in Hisparia, my tax rate is 8% or 8.25% or whatever it ends up being. Across the street, it's only 7.75. You may end up with the sales tax percentages higher, but the sales tax generated that's lower, not, probably not lower, but it, there is an impact there that is potentially negative. I just want you guys to consider everything.
Well, let's talk about assessments. We, the street lighting assessment, that was an odd, that's an odd voting arrangement. Can you explain how assessments work?
Sure. So, under an assessment, the city council then votes to adopt the assessment, and I'm going to lean on Carol Lee and maybe Andre for this, I'm going to do my best. The city council votes to adopt it, and it goes to the voters, or, I don't know if it's the voters or the, or the landowners, but it goes to those affected, and then they return their ballots to the city, and we spent, what, a week counting the, the, the street lighting district. I'll contrast it with the LACCO protest vote, wherein you have to get 25% saying no to whatever LACCO has adopted. In this case, you count the votes. So, if, to use the Costco example, let's say you were going to pay $50, and Costco was going to pay $150, their vote would count three times more, uh, two times, really, more than yours. So, it's done on a percentage basis, and it's, and it's a little bit different in that the council is sort of taking more of an ownership of it, versus asking the voters.
It's a majority of the...
It is, well, it's the majority of the ballots that get submitted.
Right.
So, depending on how many ballots get submitted, but then it's also counted based on weighting. So, if you're weighting your assessments, it can, it can totally influence the outcome.
Yeah.
Some of the, some of the complications with it are, the engineering report to justify it has to be very, very thorough, and that's a very complicated document, especially when you're doing it citywide, or trying to do it citywide, and because of that, it's also potentially more subject to challenges, like legal challenges, people saying, I shouldn't be paying this, so that's one of the, one of the downsides.
Well, I would think a business person would be willing to pay more than probably residences, because they have a lot more at stake. Just the very idea, they're operating a business and may not have a good response to a substandard service, they want that. The individuals that I heard from were actually business people, who wants to ensure that we have a good fire department, good response, good service. I would think it would be easier to do it that way, but I haven't seen enough data to make it...
Yeah, it is very difficult. Very, very difficult.
So, I'd like to ask the obvious question, of course, to me. After the communication, this table that we're having, I think, would it be permissible for the audience to submit any more of these little cards? I'm sure they'd like to say something, and so, can we do that? Is there something that says no? Can they start submitting something? I think I'd like to hear, I think we would all like to hear what they're thinking, because we represent them. So, is there something against that? Can we offer that to them? I don't know, there's a rule or a policy that says that they can't.
Well, there's a public comment section.
Yeah, there's a public comment.
Okay, so then, that will be coming up soon, I'm assuming?
It's part of our agenda.
Tell me again.
Yeah, and again, I'm not asking for a final decision on any of this, so we'll come back.
Yeah, it is, it is, but what I'm saying is, we're on item number two, and we have about 45 minutes, we haven't heard from anyone out there. I'm interested, they're already here, I don't have to go through them.
Let us continue, so we don't waste any more time.
When is this, that are coming up, so I, I am aware?
It's right there.
We had cards for individuals who wanted to speak.
What cards do we have? So, that means no one else will speak, right?
That was on those items.
If they wanted to speak, they would have filled out a card, or they could, you know...
Okay, so then, you're more than welcome to get another card, that's what I just heard, and be able to speak as you wish. We don't have any cards here, so if you have something lingering, please fill out a card. Carol Lee has a card there.
Well, you know, I think it would be interesting to hear opinions, but, but what we're going to have to figure out is what we think the entire city is going to, is going to be willing to do, and I think we have to look at some statistics about what's like, more likely to pass, and what we know is that we're going to do something.
We have to...
Voters are either going to approve one of these, or if none of that happens, we will annex into FP5, because we don't have another. We only have a range of choices. We're going to do one or the other.
We have to really understand our decision here, so that we can actually direct.
But we need the whole public educated, not, not just a small...
The, my opinion on that, I haven't tried to refrain from sharing my opinion, I would some of you privately. Based on a transient occupancy tax, that would have been a tax on visitors in 2008 or '06, or something along those lines, that failed to even get 40% of the vote, my concern is that we're going to spend time and money on something that I don't believe any of these taxes are going to pass in the city of Victorville. I 100% support the attempt to get the voters' input on a tax, and I would hope that they would consider it. Based on past performance, I don't recall the last time a tax was adopted through an election process in Victorville. So, I think it's an uphill climb regardless, so we have to be very careful about the, you know, which type of tax, and when it comes, and, and all of those things.
I was hoping we could eliminate, to make staff's job easier, the utility tax. I think we should eliminate it, that's just my opinion.
Yeah.
The sales tax right now, transactions, that should be eliminated, to save the staff time so that they don't get in the downhill. We have no monies there, and staff needs to refine this and come up with projected incomes, not spend months looking at items that we probably wouldn't give to the public anyway. So, those would be the two that I would suggest we just throw it out now, so that we can concentrate on those that are on point, that's restricted to public service, and that we can define and come up with a plan that will tell how much money will be raised if the voters approve.
But, based on your comment, I, I'm thinking that narrows it down to a parcel tax, or a benefit assessment.
That's what I'm thinking.
Oh, what? Or a benefit assessment.
Benefit assessment, like the street lighting.
Like the street lighting.
I think those two make more sense.
Yeah, those two make more sense, yeah. So, we should stay with those things.
My opinion that we shouldn't narrow it too much, I mean, I know you have a lot of experience of being a city manager for over 30 years. I don't have that fortunate luck, so in my opinion, I think it's valuable to not narrow it too much.
It is, it's very valuable. I appreciate that. What I'm trying to do is to help staff, because we want to get these, we want to move as quickly as possible, so staff can refine this and get figures back to the city council, and if they spend a lot of time on items that we're not going to pursue anyway, they've wasted a lot of time, and we've delayed the project. We need to act as quickly as possible, I think.
I agree. All right. I don't want to...
I understand that quickness is important, but this is also something that's going to go to the taxpayers, and I, I'm also a valuable vote, like all of you are. Maybe I'm not in the majority, but please, if you consider at times that, you know...
What are you saying? You want to leave parcel tax and sales tax in?
What I'm saying is not just narrow it too narrow, to where you're giving the staff work, I guess I'll spend hours with them to figure out some of these things.
I don't want to make it so narrow that they can't have a...
They have their job and...
Mr. Cox, just to toss something out there, right now, the, I guess, the general comment is that we would study parcel tax and a benefit assessment, which is entirely doable. Parcel tax and benefit assessment are probably the most complicated, but they're also, because of that, they're the most fair, because it can be adjusted for parcel size or business use, whatever, rather than a, it could be a flat, but I don't think that's what I'm hearing that you'd like to do. The transaction and use tax, I don't want to advocate for it, even though it does potentially put us at a disadvantage with our neighbors, it's relatively easy to study, once you have a projected dollar amount, because we know how much sales tax we, we receive annually. So, the numbers would be fairly easy, versus a parcel tax, we've got to count parcels, get the size, get this, get that, whereas sales tax is simply based on an eighth of a percent, a quarter of a percent, whatever it takes. Say, we look at it and decide we need $5 million or $8 million, whatever, getting to that number through a transaction and use tax applied to the sales tax would be literally five minutes to get to, so I don't want to completely kill that one.
Okay. That makes sense.
You know, and that also, I think, doesn't narrow it too much, which speaks at least to some councilman's realnesses concern as well.
Okay.
Okay, can I call the...
Absolutely. You'll be, I don't want to dominate.
I have a card here, Deborah Jones.
There's no microphone. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I came in late, didn't have an opportunity to fill out a card in advance, so thank you very much. This is a very interesting subject to me, on a very personal level. My husband and I have six children, I got them all the easy way, all six are grown, but our last two are adopted, and they're our foster children, they both have special needs. And, so, my daughter has epilepsy, medically intractable epilepsy, and there have been times where we've had to call 911, and I had to do that just recently, a couple months ago, and it had been years since I had to do it, and every time that I've had to do it, I, I've been reminded about how wonderful it is to have these services. And, so, my daughter is five foot tall, she's a little feisty little teenette, and she's a third-degree black belt, and she's an instructor, and she was having some problems at work and she couldn't walk, and we knew that, it didn't seem like typical seizure activity, and so I was going to just go pick her up at work and drive her to the emergency room, and when I got there, she couldn't even walk, and, so I thought, well, I'm just going to go home, call 911 on the way, and then they would meet me at my home, and they told me to pull over on the side of the road, and within a few minutes, I, I can't even tell you how happy I was to see that red fire truck coming my way to help my daughter, because she couldn't feel her arms, she was having a hard time breathing, and this wasn't typical seizure activity. So, even though it had been years since I had used services, it reminded me again about how vital these services are, how much it means in my life, and how much it meant to my daughter. And just as a really quick shout-out, that the, the people that came were absolutely amazing people. They had just the right sense of humor and professionalism and comfort to give to my daughter, and for me, I would pay $100 a month to have those kind of services for any, any member of my family, and for that matter, any of my neighbors in the community, whether it's a homeless person on the street, or a neighbor, a neighbor down the street. I'm happy to do that. I know that $150 a year, and what that looks like, looks like an aggregate 10 years out, I don't know, but, and that's harder for some people to pay, but for me, I would just assume have it on my property tax at the end of the year. I know it's a budgeted amount, I know what it's going to look like, rather than having something that's a tax that comes to me every time I go and buy something, or, because there's a psychological impact to that, because that, that down the road is going to look like Victorville is sticking it to me, versus this is, this is a set amount of money that I'm paying to help my family and my neighbors, and I would certainly prefer to do that. I really appreciate the due diligence. It's a very good conversation, I appreciate the questions, but for me, we need the services, and I, I would like to see it on my property tax, versus a regular tax. In a council election, it's going to be more than $114,000 if you do that, because that's just the base cost. It's all the marketing that goes with it and everything else, and the, the consuming of personnel services, so that number could conceivably double. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your input. I don't have any other cards, and we lost us...
Staff needs to get to work, and we need to make a decision so they can get to work, so...
Yeah. Make a motion?
What I essentially heard was the one that you are eliminating is the utility uses tax, and that you want, you want staff to focus on parcel tax?
I think what Doug suggested is, well, right now, we can remove those and put them on the bottom of the list, concentrate on, on the assessment and the parcel taxes. And that's, and I think that's...
And Doug's going to provide information...
Yes.
...just as well on the transaction and use tax, if that's relatively easy to do.
Just because it's some, it's some opportunity, I apologize, I'd step out from...
Doug, we don't need a motion on that, do we? I wouldn't think so.
Well, we need to give you the ration.
Um, well, I don't know that I need a motion necessarily, I think it's pretty clear...
Okay.
...the way we're going to proceed forward. We will get it done as quickly as possible, because this is a hot issue, and we want to bring it back for further discussion as soon as we can.
All right.
In a workshop, another workshop?
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the more, the more that we open this up, the more that people see the due diligence we're putting in this, and they see the numbers, I think the more that we have a chance of coming to the right conclusion, so. I have a lot of questions, but they're not questions for tonight, because I'm dealing with figures, and I wouldn't expect you to give an answer, but I know all the council do, but probably at the next workshop, you can have those figures available to the council.
We will make sure to have parcel tax options available.
Yes.
We will make sure that transaction and use tax, it's an easy one, the benefit assessment, based on our attorney's comment earlier, and I agree with it, the engineer's report for that, it would be lengthy and complicated, so I think we're going to have to, to do our best estimate on that, without having the full report available, because that is going to be time-consuming and potentially costly from, you know, whether we hire consulting or have, try to do it internally, it'd be a little bit more cost involved on the front end, but it, it does have some different flexibility, so we can bring those back as soon as possible.
Doug, what's the, what's the plan for RFGs on fire service?
Um, we, I...
We're not going to talk about that tonight.
No, we're not talking about that tonight. I expect to have a letter agreement... or try to do it internally, it'd be a little bit more cost involved on the front end, but it does have some different flexibility. So, we can bring those back as soon as possible.
Doug, what's the plan for RFPs on fire service?
We, I...
We're not going to talk about that tonight.
No, we're not talking about that tonight. I expect to have a letter agreement from Citygate, who we use to do the work on the JPA. Expect to have a letter agreement with them next week. That would be within my spending authority of $25,000. Talking with their principal, he's going to essentially give us access to his cost modeling, and then I will use my team staff to work those numbers, run it by him, he will be an advisor, if human resources involved as well and finance is necessary, so that we can use that information to compare to CityFire with an RFP that he is also going to at least look over our shoulder on. So, an RFP will go out as quickly as we can put it together, but it'll be as complicated, as thorough as we can make it, so that it's very clear that everyone's bidding apples to apples exactly. We need to, we need a little bit of fire advice, and he's a former fire chief on exactly what a fire RFP looks like, so we can make sure that we get all, everything covered. And we'll bring that back as soon as we have those bids in.
Do you have any idea where you will send that RFP to?
Well, I know I will send it to Apple Valley Fire, County Fire, Cal Fire, and it will be a publicly available bid that anybody could bid into. I don't know of anybody else who could feasibly provide. You know, there are additional complications. I've spoken with Kathy from LAFCO about them. I'm comfortable with those. It won't be, it'll be a complicated bid, but we'll bring it to you as concise as possible for you to make a decision.
Will restarting our own CityFire be an even more complicated LAFCO process?
I, with the risk of offending Kathy, I don't believe there'd be any LAFCO process for restarting our own fire. It's a service that we are not only required to provide, but we can provide without going to LAFCO. We don't have to ask LAFCO, in my opinion.
That's correct.
Oh, I got it right.
Okay. Can we lobby other fire departments? Is that what we're going to do, where you say fire, I don't know about county and Cal Fire yet?
Not sure which means I lobby them.
Lobbying anybody?
No, we don't need to...
The bid process is a very sanitized thing. We will produce a bid document and ask any agency that's interested, those three are, you know, at least local enough that I think would be interested, or may be interested. So, I know I would send them to those three, but I don't intend on having any contact with them. That would be a very formal sanitized bid process.
And can California Fire compete with the county?
We'll see. That's the point of the RFP.
Okay. Well, I'm not finished with my questions. I'm started with questions here. I keep preparing until seven o'clock, so I have my questions, so you guys...
We still have another item to go?
Oh, yeah, I know. I just like to ask my questions here. Would we contact with other fire departments, like any private, I think, agencies?
I don't believe we would receive any bids from any private fire. There's a lot of legal issues surrounding that, and I don't know, I'm not saying there isn't one, but I don't know of one that's been successful as a private fire department, and I would be very, very, well, I'll just say it, I would not recommend that to the city council, because I would not want a for-profit to be in charge of the public safety in Victorville.
So, I think this question is for Andre. If Cal Fire decides not to bid or coming into Victorville, and we don't have a contract, does the county just take over? Would that be a possibility?
The current contract still has county continuing service, if we don't have any other options.
Yeah. If we get no bids at all, then we would have to go with CityFire or negotiate something else.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you have enough direction, Doug?
I do.
Okay. Thank you. Next item?
Can I continue? Okay, now we have, can we have the night?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
We're not in Denver, sorry.
Okay, now we have item number three, and this is public hearing to hear arguments for and against setting aside prior project approvals of the city council and the planning commission for the Tammeras Marketplace Walmart project. Madam Kirk, please read their recommendation.
The recommendation is that the city council conduct a public hearing and waive further reading and introduce by title only ordinance number 2362, repealing ordinance number 2294 and adopt resolution number 17-007, setting aside prior project approvals of the city council and the planning commission, including a parcel map and EIR certification for the Tammeras Marketplace Walmart project.
Thank you. At this time, I open the public hearing, and I do not have any cards from anyone. Therefore, I'm closing the public hearing. And council members, any...
Can you explain what we're... Essentially, what this is, was in 2012, planning commission recommended approval of the Walmart Tammeras project and adopted resolutions, making that recommendation, passing that on to the city council. City council then approved essentially five action items related to that project, essentially a site plan approval, EIR approval, et cetera. And so, after that occurred, Spring Valley Lake Association filed suit against that process and primarily focused on the adequacy of the environmental document. The superior court ruled against, in favor of Spring Valley Lake essentially. Walmart is essentially the real party in interest. They basically paid for the city's defense of that matter. They appealed the item, and subsequently, they failed on appeal. The item was remanded to superior court for further action. That court now has demanded that the city basically overturn all of its prior approvals and rescind those prior approvals. Essentially, if Walmart wants to proceed, they basically start the process again. So, what we're doing right now is, based on the court direction, we are rescinding our prior approvals, since the court has basically undermined that project in its current configuration, based on their EIR.
So, technically, we have no option?
You really have no option, otherwise the court's going to come down and do something. All we're essentially doing is agreeing, not agreeing. We are, have been mandated by the court to undo those prior approvals, because the court has found inadequacies in the EIR. And my understanding is, I don't know if it's happening or not, I think Walmart's calling ahead with an EIR to remedy those issues. That essentially will start all over again.
Is this two actions, one for the ordinance and one for the resolution, separate, or can they be together?
We have to read the title of the ordinance. I would just assume we do one for the ordinance and then...
Okay, separately?
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
Madam Kirk, do we need a motion on the...
You did a motion to introduce the ordinance and to waive further reading.
So moved. I need to read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the city council in the city of Victorville, California, repealing ordinance number 2294 to set aside the zone change portion of PLN 08-00053 relating to Tammeras Marketplace Walmart project.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kennedy, second by Ms. Gomez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Never opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now...
And then, do we just need a motion on resolution number 17007? Because that resolution essentially unwinds all of the prior resolutions that have all the city council approvals.
So moved.
Settle.
Motion by Ms. Gomez, second by Mr. Kennedy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Never opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Now, at this time, I have to call for the action to waive further.
No, it's already done.
It's already done, so that concludes 17, I mean, dash 007. So, that concludes everything, therefore...
Got the public comment.
We move on to public comments.
Cards you have?
I don't have any cards. Therefore, this meeting is adjourned.
Have to call that group we went through on Walmart.
Can we come and talk to you?
You're much too important to be talking to.
You're residents of Victorville, we're residents of Victorville.
Appreciate you saying that you wanted the people to vote.
Oh, yeah, I just think it's too important.
I just want to say that I'm...